All right, good morning. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Board Work Session for Wednesday, October 2nd, 2024. It is 9:31 a.m. My name is Time Answer, Chair of the Board. To my left, Vice Chair, Commissioner Wayne Fournier, Commissioner Carolina Mejia, and Commissioner Gary Edwards. Commissioner Claus is excused this morning, and we have at this juncture public virtual attendance on our YouTube channel. Our session started at 9:00 a.m. with our new employee orientation, which is not a livestream piece, but we're picking up with item two on the morning agenda, which is CPA 16, Community Driven Review of Agriculture, Agriculture Zoning Update, informational item. Ashley Arrai, our interim CPED Director, is going to present information for the board. And we have a couple of other topics here. We have until noon if we need it. Anything, County Manager? We go right to Ashley.
You go right to Ashley.
Okay, very good.
Thank you, and good morning, Board. This is a topic that at least some of you have heard quite a bit about. And this morning's intention is to provide information and to ask the Board whether they are ready with moving forward or scheduling a public hearing. And once I figure out, I use the mouse, I'm sorry, to scroll one. Now unfortunately, I can't read how to get it back into, thank you. I made the mistake and pressed a button instead of scrolling. Thank you so much. Wow, good eyes, you can see. So just a little overview of today's briefing. We're going to cover some background, especially for Commissioner Fournier, who wasn't here last year when we did hold a number of board briefings on this topic. History, current status, what we heard, because we have done extensive engagement on this topic, as well as next steps and questions. So why this update? Why are we here today? This is that little bit of history. So FutureWise appealed our last comprehensive plan update that was completed in 2019. And they specifically indicated that we did not use the most up-to-date soils information when designated lands, designated agricultural lands of commercial significance. At a parallel track, we were also hearing a lot from the community about their interest in trying to expand policies and programs to help protect farmland. These things kind of got lumped together into one docket item. CPA 16, which is basically looking at updates to all of our agricultural policies and programs. For this morning's purposes, we're really going to be focused on the appeal piece. We have received feedback from our legal counsel that I think we're at extension 19 or 20 on that, and they really want us to wrap that one up by the end of the year. That doesn't mean that we're not continuing to look at a number of other policy and program updates for farmland protection.
Can I just add two things there? So on the docket item, the review of policies was a planning commission recommendation to the board. So when you said we got like lengthened, and that was the board responding to the planning commission's recommendation, and then going ahead and docketing them as a bigger item.
Yep, a much more comprehensive package.
Which is what we've been working on. And then the second thing I wanted to say was that the FutureWise lawsuit, we've had other situations in the county where there may be a threat of a lawsuit, you know, a letter, hey, you know, you know, I'm thinking of the disability rights, Washington situation we've had, but this was an actual filed piece of litigation. So when you mentioned continuances, you're talking about in court, by judges, and that can't go on forever.
Yes, it is their grace that allows us to continue this process, but we have to file formal extensions to continue our community discussion in response to the appeal. So a recap of what is long-term agriculture zoning. State law does require counties to protect agricultural lands of long-term commercial significance, and that commercial significance piece is really important as it pertains to policy decisions. We currently protect 15,500 acres within the county. They're the best of the best farmland soils we have. And that 15,500 acres, in terms of percentages, actually puts us right in line with other counties you think of as being good at protecting farmland. Snohomish, Clark, Pierce, if you're just looking at the best of the best farmland, we're right at that like 30% mark, near where they are, I think it's about 25 to 35%. So we're not that far off. It's misleading to just look at acreages, and I mention that because I know it has come up a lot. That we're far behind.
You used the word protect, what do you mean?
So protecting, protecting lands for agriculture is really just saying that agriculture should be the highest and best use, and we're going to limit what can be built on it. So if you take a, if you take a chunk of land that is currently zoned, one house per five acres, changing it to agricultural zoning is basically saying you can only build one house per 20 acres. So you reduce the amount of development that can happen on that site. It is also important to note through this whole long process, agriculture zoning is just one tool in the toolbox. And I think that's what was so enlightening both for staff and the community as we came together is, that's one tool. It is the tool from landowner's perspective that feels like the most blunt instrument, it feels punitive. It doesn't come with a lot of tangible benefits to them. There are community benefits, but the benefits of that landowner, whose land is actually being devalued through this downzone, they haven't come to fruition. Other tools that came up through this whole process that we now have sort of in the mix for looking at moving forward, improved development regulations, and the board took action earlier this year in February to make some big updates to our agricultural codes that we're getting feedback, you know, on the ground now are actually helping. Improved and increased availability of processing facilities. Think about the livestock processing study that you all helped fund. That, that study is now the basis of, you know, trying to get additional funding for the agricultural business park. We've got simplified permitting processes. We've got more manure storage facilities being built in this county than ever before because we now have a simplified permitting process for getting one of the most important, best management practices for conservation out on the ground. We can also look at reduced fees and taxes. We already have an open space tax program, but ways to expand that. We made some tweaks to it with the board's approval last year. And then, of course, conservation easements. So rather than downzoning property owners' land, it's paying them for the development, paying them to retire those development rights instead of just taking them through a zoning process.
Can I, not a question, but just a comment. I, the other tools that support farmers, for me, I, thank you for stating kind of every, like, just ticking off. I would like to see something, or like, just for the public, right? We're kind of what list that you just went through of like, this is how we have improved development regulations, one, two, three. This is how, because I think the board has had a lot of, has done a lot of work for, you know, everything that you just listed, and I just, I think it just needs to be really laid out in a more forthcoming way. So, but I do appreciate you bringing that up.
Yeah, I, the, the board has done a tremendous amount of work in the last year and a half, and probably the most important is setting aside funds for an agriculture program manager. Kevin Jensen is out in the community trying to help farmers, trying to get these things on the ground. It's been huge in terms of just that shift in how we relate to our agricultural operators, and then looking for additional opportunities to help. So yes, I would agree, being able to communicate that more is an area of opportunity.
I'm sure Kevin can help with that.
Kevin can help with that.
I appreciate the holistic approach as well, and having a carrot is much better than the, you know, the more punitive kind of approach.
So in terms of where we're at in the process, because it really was this larger docket item, we have spent a lot of time with the community. We've held stakeholder groups, done community outreach, planning commission, a series of community open houses, and then, of course, we had work sessions last year with the board. And what have we heard, to your point about carrot versus stick? The common theme, whether we were hearing from farmland protection advocates or landowners who might be affected by this, they really felt that property owners should be compensated for those lost development rights to ensure that the, the community benefit is realized essentially.
Can I ask about that? Because I totally get that, like, what, the idea of it, it, the reality of it seems impossible to me. So I'm just wondering, other juristic, is there examples where a county went out and did a major rezone and paid, paid all of the property owners for their development rights? Like, is that how it's usually done, or is it?
That's what the conservation easement process kind of is, right? Like, you're buying, the county buys those development rights, and then it keeps it long-term ag. It doesn't necessarily rezone it long-term.
Well, we do like, with our conservation futures, we do it like here and there, but not like when we were talking about 7,000 acres at one point, or, or even more. I mean, when you guys were doing the process, they were like, oh, you could do 3,000 acres, you could do 7,000, or you could do like, there was a huger number. Like, how would you ever, how would, how would landowners ever be compensated for that in reality? I mean, how does that work? I know we've talked about a conservation REIT tax to where you'd have a funding source potentially for acquiring these, I mean, that's one way. But I just, I'm asking for, is there a practical example where that's what a county did?
There's.
At a large scale?
I would say each county has approached it differently. They're really great questions, and we're hoping to get answers to those questions through the Working Lands Conservation Strategy Grant that was funded. That process just got kicked off three months ago. We're having our first technical advisory work group meeting in November, where we're starting to bring all these very similar stakeholders together to say, okay, let's, let's shift gears and focus on that piece. So I would say depending on where the county is, what their funding looks like, each one has a different, a different mix of programs they're pulling together, whether it's just through conservation easements. I think some of them err on that side of just the carrots. A lot of the lands that were designated agriculture were designated years ago. It's not a lot of new lands being brought online. I think Pierce County is the only one I know of that just recently brought new lands on, on board, and as a result of that, are also going through updates to all their conservation incentive programs.
If it's always been zoned ag, you're not taking away from any landowner. If they purchased it and it was zoned that, then.
We have a lot of land that was rezoned in 1996, and the landowners still own it and have felt.
That was a long time ago now.
It was a long time ago. I would say that this, this project, we still heard from them that the Transfer Development Rights Program, which is what the county put in place at that time as a way to help compensate, never quite worked out. Best of intentions, I think the, the state didn't realize that, how hard it would be to create a market for those, because it's really, it's a private market rather than, well, yeah, it's a private market. And so it's like, how do you set that market up? So there's a lot of work being done right now in Western Washington to try to figure out how to make that market work. Because, to your point, Commissioner Mensah, we probably will never have the funds as a county to go out and do all of this, but if you can make programs like that work, you, whatever we're able to invest can be augmented by the private market. So more to come. So hold on to the questions. We'll have a lot more answers here in the coming months.
Maybe I could just throw something in. Jeff Swobec used to work for Department of Agriculture, and he would go around to the different folks that were interested in easement-type purchases. And then they still got the use of the land, and that's kind of what Wayne was referring to. And then they got compensated, and then the property was never going to be developed after that because they got paid upfront.
By who?
Through, by the federal government.
Yep, they were NRCS grassland easements. Colvin Ranch was one of the first.
Example down there. So, I mean, there are ways to do it. It just, we don't have the money to do it. We can't. Well, you know, just, I'm like a broken record, you guys, I'm sure, about how we never got the authority under the Growth Management Act. We just.
No, I get that. I just, it just seems to me, I've always been confused by the, it seems to me like, that's a big deal, right? Whether that's done or required to be done or not. And the fact that we, when we talk about it, it's like, oh, well, we, you know, we could, I mean, it sounds, from what I think our lawyers have said, we have the right as a board. I mean, I know it's controversial, but we have the authority to just rezone and not pay anyone anything.
But we could end up in court and face some damages.
I think, I think as it relates to this, what, what we ended up coming to the conclusion on is the county already does a really good job of protecting the best of the best farmland soils. The list is, as they've been updated, they were adding soils that really aren't the best for farmland. So if you think about making an investment in keeping these lands in agriculture, is it really the best investment?
That's kind of, I think what Greg Schoenbacher's email was talking about, the soil types.
He's taken me out and shown me, and just to, I want to finish my thoughts so nobody thinks that I'm, I'm going a different direction. My point, my point was that we have the authority to do it, but, but we, to do it, or, I mean, the fact that it's just kind of like, well, should we, you know, the fact that it's just kind of like thrown up in the air of like, oh, we should, we could do that, but we could, you know, we could, we should compensate landowners. The fact that that's just kind of a ball thrown up in the air, I don't know, it just, it seems odd to me. It's, it's a big deal, and it seems like there should be a, if not a law or a rule, at least a common practice, you know, of whether or not a local jurisdiction rezoning someone's private property would be required to compensate or not. I mean, that just seems to be, the idea that we could do it or we could not do it, you know, just how much heat do we want to take from property owners? That seems odd to me. That's why I'm asking, like, is there a common, because I think, I don't think there's a law that says we have to do it, but is there a kind of a way that, would we be out of the box if we did it? Or would we be out of the box if we didn't do it? In that, and I'd like to look at case studies of counties that did significant rezone, you know, significant numbers of acres, and then how did they manage that with their communities, you know? Did they go to the federal government and have these grants that you're talking about from 30 years ago? Did they, did they pass a conservation REIT tax and use the funding for that to buy development rights? Did they, I just, you know, I just want to know, like, I always want to know, when I do something that's controversial, I always want to know, like, how far out on a limb am I, you know? Am I really doing something that's just never been done? And sometimes you got to do that, but I want to know that, you know, versus, you know, being back on the limb and be like, no, this is just, this is what you have to do. If you want to protect farmland, you got to rezone, and doesn't, you know, and property owners, you know, have, you know, I don't know. Maybe that's the historical mentality. I just have never gotten a sense of that through this process.
One, one thing about it, if you step over the line, so to speak, and a court ends up ruling on it, then you got precedent set, and that's what.
But what would it be, what, what step would be over the line? I mean.
Well, that's the question. How far do you push it?
Our attorneys have never said that anything we're talking about here would be over any kind of legal line.
And the argument that other folks are making is this is government taking our property and taking our assets and.
Yeah, there, there, in our state constitution, it's pretty strong about taking without compensation.
It's differently than the federal.
Yeah, it's different than the federal. It says taking or damaging, federal.
Improving the market and incentivizing, like, farmland to be kept farmland. And so like the, you know, the meat processing facility is like the best, greatest example I can think of how to protect farmland, and it's make it more valuable through keeping it working lands. I think if that's our focus, I think we're right on the money, so.
So other concerns that we heard, that, that was like the common theme. Concerns over wet and drought-prone soils being zoned for commercial agriculture. When you think of, about land that's going to be able to support commercially significant agriculture, carrots, versus, you know, winter, winter grazing with nutritional supplements, that's essentially what you got. Our drought, our drought-prone soils, which I know you went out with Greg Schoenbacher, and you got to see, he's got some of the best of the best soils. He also has.
Some of the worst on top of you.
The Spanaway spuds soils that are really, really dry, and you can't grow much on them unless you have irrigation.
And the problem was, in our prior process, we lumped everything together.
Well, USDA lumped everything together because they weren't thinking about policy decisions. We heard that loud and clear from USDA when we engaged with them about, how do you use this list? And how is the state telling us as a county to use this list? They do not like align, they don't relate at all. When they heard that we were going to be basing policy decisions about protecting farmland, because they called something prime farmland if irrigated or prime farmland if drained, they were just astonished. They were like, why would you use something that we're using to just help farmers determine what kind of supplements they need to have productive farmland as some, you know, a grounds for rezones? So they can, they stayed strong in contending that.
So you're like, stay away from our maps.
They're like, our map shouldn't be used. They, these wet and drought-prone soils fall into categories called prime if drained or prime if irrigated. Prime if not historically drained means that's covered in wetlands right now, and you'd have to drain the wetlands to turn it into a farm.
And you can't drain the wetlands, and there's.
Nor would you want to.
And you wouldn't want to.
Well, but, but that's what they're saying. You'd have to do that to make it prime.
Only considered prime if drained.
If drained. Same way with, if you have water rights. Water rights aren't easy to come by either.
And not a lot of our farmers, it's really difficult to figure out what percentage of them with these soils have irrigation, but it's not a lot. There are things that the county can do, and this falls in the bank of how do we incentivize and support farmers. There are other counties out there, we're exploring this as well, that have created water banks, that have tried to secure water on behalf of their agricultural sector. That is something that the county could look into. And until we have that question solved, you know, it might not, commercially significant ag is not going to really be taking place on those soils. They're not considered prime. We also heard, when we started looking at the maps, a lot of, a lot of the land that was being considered have current mining operations or forestry operations. And so then we're pitting, we want you to have ag here. Should you be cutting down all your trees to support ag? The ag advisory committee had a very lively discussion about that. And then we also, this, this, I think, is an idea that we have included in the recommendation, considering a voluntary opt-in, just as we do our annual comprehensive plan updates, doing a call out for, does anyone want to be rezone LTA? We actually do have some farmers that already have conservation easements that might want a long-term agricultural zoning because it allows more commercial agricultural businesses. So I brought it up with the Agriculture Advisory Committee last week and was just like, is this, is there any takers here? So we're waiting to hear, but then we might actually get folks that want to be in long-term agricultural zoning, and we didn't have a pathway for that before. Someone was going to have to pay their own fee, go through their own process, and now we think it should just be part of the annual amendment process, that if we have folks that want to be in LTA, let's open the doors and let them, let them come in.
So it, I know this is totally off-topic, but if that is something that can be done, why were we so adverse to the guy that wanted the landmark program, the guy that wanted to opt in and like, for his own property to like, so that the trees couldn't be cut off of it? Like, why couldn't you create something like that? It was.
He want, yeah.
It, it sounds exactly like what you're describing, opt-in to add zoning, opt-in to some other kind of zoning.
Oh, no, it wasn't zoning. He actually wanted a program created. So we, if you want to chat about that, I think it'd be good to sit down and have a briefing.
Way to tweak though, what he's trying to get to and make it something like this.
The zoning doesn't have protections for tree cutting, which is really what he wanted, but we can, i- if it's okay, we could set up a time to chat about that.
Create a zone. Right? We've done it before. We created a special zone for Evergreen State College with special parameters and limitations and allowances. But that was such a small parcel, wasn't it?
Sounds like that one we could.
About a half acre parcel.
Different day.
Yep, thank you.
Happy to follow up, Cherry, with you offline.
So all of that, I know I'm providing like the big picture, and then we're going to narrow it down to the appeal because I do want you to hear all of the great work that the community's done, that you've done over the last few years, and then how do we satisfy this one piece? Well, we continue on with all of that other work. So what we have found out is if you exclude those lands that are only considered prime farmland, if you drain them, if you get permit for draining them, or if you have water, you can update the list of soils, and there are no changes to the maps. And just to be clear, we're still adding 17 soils to the list. We are going through this exercise. 17 new soils got added to the list, but when we ran it through the mapping exercise, it doesn't change the maps because of all the other criteria. Soils is just one. So when you start laying around all the other criteria, there's still no changes. So what we're asking the board today is, do you feel comfortable setting a public hearing on a proposal that has the updated list of soils, has this new opting clause, has other cleanup? Because there have been changes in state law in our comprehensive plan, so. Because there have been changes in state law, um, in our comprehensive plan, so you will see cha-, you'll see a marked up version, um, which was in your packet for the comprehensive plan. And then we will continue on all of the other work, but the appeal will be satisfied.
And there were, there's not necessarily any new lands being added? Okay.
Not through this. Now, whether we have folks who want to opt in or at some later date, we want to, this can always be explored in the future.
Want to, but, uh, Schoenbacher, did he send in a letter? I haven't seen it, but
Yes.
Said he sent in a letter. I don't know if you guys saw it, saying that this makes sense.
It was in the mail this morning.
Was it? I didn't get a chance to read it.
So Ashley, going back to, um, the, um, voluntary opt-in, um, which I think is great, so are you taking considerations this year or are you going to wait until next year?
If we get a cons-, if we have someone that reaches out to us between now and the public hearing, I think we can take it this year. Otherwise, it'll be next year.
I mean, then do we need to put the word out that, you know, if this is something you want to opt in, this is kind of your timeline to do it?
We could, we could include it. We did, um, include it in the, the communications that went out for this briefing, but we can do a broader blast for the public hearing if it's something that the board wants to highlight. We didn't want to get ahead of ourselves.
If it's going to close the timeline for people, I mean, and then they have to wait until next year, I would like for it to be considered.
I might have a suggestion to cover that, maybe, I don't know. Can I jump into that?
Yeah.
Under chapter three, three fourteen is the page. Maybe you can tell me if this is going to be applicable, but, under that natural resource lands, paragraph D, it's got in there that site-specific evidence and requests for de-designation must be deferred to a comprehensive countywide analysis. I thought that was already what we were doing, was a comprehensive countywide analysis. So, and, and it seems like, let's just say you've got forty acres that are set aside as soils for this one, and it, and it's the whole thing, kind of the way it used to be with, okay, you've got this if you can water it, if you can drain it, you know, that kind of thing. So we're kind of addressing that. If that said, may be deferred rather than must be deferred.
So this is actually one of the updates because of state law. So this isn't one that staff introduced and state law got updated. Um, I think it was last, last year or the two sessions ago, and this part is probably almost verbatim right out of state law and their updates.
So there's no flexibility in the end. And my concern is that you've got properties, and I'm going to use Schoenbacher's as an example, where he's got excellent property, that river bottom. Then he's got that property on the higher ground that's almost worthless except growing trees or something. I mean, if you can't drain it, you can't water it because of water rights. And I'm just, he might have water rights, I don't know. But it's just an example of why be locked in to including that, which is unrealistic, that's all. But if you're saying it's state law and we don't have any flexibility.
Not on this one. And even when we did try to de-designate, when the, the county, um, de-designated some specific parcels of the years back, there was an appeal. We had to bring land in to compensate for land that was being taken out. So now the, the state has basically said, you can't de-designate, um, unless you're doing it through one of your periodic reviews.
How does the planning commission fit into, like, into this recommended option? Are they, have they been part of this proposal to kind of sever the two pieces and move this forward or, or not?
So they, they looked at it last year. Their recommendation was to include, um, soils that were prone to drought. Um, and so that's what we discussed with the board last year is what does it look like if you are, you know, pulling those soils in? Um, and then USDA updated all of their information, and so we had to go back to the drawing board. One of the other things the board asked for was, what does it look like if you don't include those soils? Um, and so it's taken, it took us months between onboarding a new GIS analyst and processing all, processing all of the new information to be able to answer your questions as a board. But, yeah, the, the planning commission, um, it was a split vote, but they voted.
And they kind of finished their work on this.
They finished their work.
So they didn't, okay, this isn't cycling back through.
This did not cycle back through. I would say that if we, with all of the updated, updated soils information, um, it would have brought in a number of new property owners and we would have gone back through the planning commission. Which would take another year.
You mean if we were going to think about doing the zoning?
If you wanted to, if the board wanted to include, um, soils prone to drought, um, there would be a lot more, um, process that we would need to go through to make sure that all landowners had an opportunity to participate.
Uh, myself, I'm, I'm good with moving forward with this public hearing based on what staff's recommended.
It sounds to me like what we're saying is we've got a path forward to just, because we've updated the soils and the, and then the map exercise, we have a path forward to, to just shut down the, shut down or resolve the litigation piece. Work will continue on the broader set of tools. And, and so, you know, like to say that, I just want to clarify, we're not saying by this, moving this forward, this option, that we're, we won't move forward with this some kind of zoning change or something else. That's still a decision for the future. We're just saying, we want to move, we definitely want to get this litigation done because it's been pending for, the whole time I've been on the board, I think.
Yeah. Yep.
Yeah, and that's not going to, yeah, okay, well, that's pretty, that's pretty much a no-brainer then.
The process that the outline about they're going to go through, then other things will come back to the board consideration.
Okay, so does that cover your, what we needed to say?
So opt-in clause include? Is that board direction to include that and to try to get the word out on that? I just want to make sure.
For folks that want to.
I think that's addressed at the bottom of three twelve.
Yeah, just making sure, yep, guess it comes up.
Yeah, yeah, I think we're ready, I think we're ready to.
And then, um, we'll also work on those communications pieces, um, just putting together, uh, an overview of what the county's accomplished in the last few years under that document item and elsewhere. So you will, uh, be seeing an AIS then to, on the consent calendar, to set up a public hearing for November so that we can include this in that final action that you get to take once a year to update the comprehensive plan. So this package, at the end of the year, will get rolled up with anything you decide to move forward with on Grand Mount.
So what is it that we ultimately will have to, like, approve?
So you will be approving the.
Said the map doesn't change. A new list of soils or?
Yep, so all of the, the red line in the chapter three in the comprehensive plan. So you'll have a new soils list that has seventeen more soils than the old one. And then those red line changes for the opt-in clause and then state law changes and some other cleanup.
So we'll get a public hearing, say, in November? Okay.
Thank you.
Everything's good?
I'm not going anywhere. I'm here for the next briefing, so.
Okay. A new topic area here.
Oh, sorry, Tom, sorry.
I have no idea where I could, what folder I put this topic in.
Think you guys put a lot of work into it. I'm glad we actually slowed it down. Benefited us, I think, you know?
We've learned a lot.
All right, so the next topic is less restrictive alternative community housing. I know we had a presentation, board had certain questions. I'm assuming this is a follow-up to that last section, so.
Um, Ashley Wright, interim director of community planning and economic development, and I am joined here today by Hannah Raji-Base, member of our growth management services team who's been taking the lead on this project and keeping it moving. As Commissioner Mensah mentioned, we are here today to really just follow up on the two primary questions that came out of the last briefing and then asking the board whether you feel comfortable moving forward with scheduling your public hearing. So overview of today's briefing, we'll just quickly go through the process to date as a reminder. Um, and then we're going to touch on the proposed new definition, given the feedback that you all provided, um, the information we learned about business licensing and inspections, um, as well as next steps. So here's been our process to date. This was ranked number one on the development code docket, so we got it to the planning commission as soon as the docket was approved. So that was in April. Um, held work sessions with the planning commission, followed by a public hearing. And then, of course, we came to the board, um, in August with an introductory brief, and we're back today. So the, the question from the board, um, that we followed up with the prosecuting attorney's office on was whether we could amend the definition to be more transparent and clear about what these facilities actually are. And so up there in the, the red underline is what we were able to develop. Do you have anything that you want to add?
Um, no, I just touched base with the prosecuting attorney's office on ways we could try and make it more transparent, and so this was done in collaboration with them. Um, and you can see, like, while people on the left and sex offenders on the right, we just changed those words, and then the underlying text, as Ashley said, was in addition to amend that further.
Any questions? And or thumbs up on including this?
It's the language that the commissioners are good with.
I understand adding that in there, but there aren't, there's less restrictive alternative community housing models or whatever that are for folks other than sex offenders, correct? Like, it seems like that's, you know, the state is looking for all kinds of, like this, you know, all these different LRAs that would be for juvenile offenders, you know, mental health, you know, folks, and like, it seems to be like this community-based model that they're trying to move all kinds of different folks into. And if we, like, if, you know, like, with this whole, with the Green Hill discussion, there was some talk about, you know, having community-based, uh, you know, kind of confinement, not confinement for juvenile offenders would, I mean.
Are you asking, does this, does this LRA, is it a broad blanket for other uses? Are they just specific for folks, well, for sex offenders?
Because it says, yeah, it says court-ordered treatment on one, on one, I mean, that could be lots of different types of treatment, right? Not just.
And we, the docket item is focused on the new mandates for LRA community housing for sex offenders, and so this definition is, reflects what's in state law as it pertains to that. There are different sections that would apply to those other.
Yeah, I just, I just.
States.
I just looked up seventy-one oh nine oh nine two, and it's specific to sex offenders.
Okay, okay.
So I mean, by having that reference in there, it's probably okay.
I just see the state trying to do this in every different field they can with, you know, pri-, working with private industry to, you know, move people that are in confinement into community settings.
And I, as, as we see that trend continue, this will be a good model for whether it's just a small tweak to the definition and all of a sudden the special use provisions apply, or whether they're distinct enough that we still use this model, but, you know, we call it out as a, a distinct special use.
Yeah.
If, well, i- i- if we, uh, added, what kind what Wayne's bringing up here is, if we added after where we've got residents used to house sex offenders, if we added or others, so it would say resident used to house sex offenders or other court-ordered treatment uh, issues, and that'd cover your mental health and juvenile and all that.
Why don't we just leave it as people then?
Well, because we want the public to know these people are, these are sex offenders. They're trying to slip them.
Just to be clear, that, no, um, the chair mentioned, this code, RCW, has to deal, deal with just sex offenders. What Ashley said is there's other codes that deal with the others.
Oh, okay.
If we blur it, it, it'll become confusing. So really, the, the, the question before, um, the commissioners are, you wanted, based on the last conversation, some greater definition. Uh, they've worked with the, our legal team collaboratively to come up, is, is this greater definition meets your uh, agreement so that they can move forward?
I, I'm good with that myself.
I don't know why I cannot. I, I want to hear from my seatmates on, why does it have to say sex offenders instead of people? I mean, I.
Because sex offenders is a hot topic that the public ought to know about. This is people, there's a good, this is my position, that people might just, it might gloss over and nobody's going to pay attention. I want, I want the public to be very aware of what the state is trying to do, and that includes why it's important to have that the state is doing this. It's not some Coney County initiative.
Well, I think that is covered in, you know, the citing of, like, seventy-one oh nine.
But, yeah, but then they're going to go look that up? Nobody's going to look that up.
If it's, um, helpful at all to the discussion, the code already has secure community transition facilities, which are those state-run facilities, and these are the private, and, uh, they do call out the term sex offender in that code definition as well. I don't know if that's helpful at all.
And what was the recommendation from the planning commission?
The planning commission felt really strongly that we should be transparent and that even when we, our docket item was LRA community housing, it sounded almost like an affordable housing initiative, and so we worked with the board's PIO's office to have it be state-mandated housing for sex offenders, just so we were being really clear, because community housing can come across as, oh, wow, that's a, you know, new way to build apartments or whatnot.
Yeah, so, so it came from the planning commission, and based on the discussion last time, that was a takeaway staff had to look at what options. So it's really your, your decision at this point, because it's not, it's not the recommendation of staff. It's coming from planning commission and from discussions here at this level, from commissioners. We just try to fulfill the direction, give some options.
Can we go to the next piece?
So this topic, um, was whether, and this falls outside of CPED or the codes we usually, um, work on, business license, business licensing and inspections. And kind of putting those two things together, because a lot of times inspections may come with a business license program or whatnot. But, so we, we had a good meeting with Auditor Hall and some of our staff to understand what the county's current business license program is and whether there is capacity to also, um, require business licenses and maybe, you know, semi-annual inspections or whatnot of privately run residential facilities. We can't just call out LR community housing facilities. It has to be any privately run residential facilities, which also means there's a lot of them. Um, our county's current business license program is very narrowly scoped. What was it? They only have a few a year?
Maybe two or three.
Um, and they don't have the resources or the expertise if we started talking about having them check for certain licensing or whatnot, um, to do any kind of. them check for certain licensing or whatnot, um, to do any kind of inspections or tracking of these privately, privately-run residential facilities. So if the board would like to further those conversations, they're probably better held with the auditor's office that operates that program, but we did try to at least get some initial answers on whether this was worth further exploring.
That's just for a business license, there, what about food handling issues, like, you know, health permits?
So those are written in as requirements, because this is considered like a quasi-commercial operation, and so those are codified. So they would be required to have those. It's really, it was just another tracking mechanism, um, to make sure that there's kind of this annual check, right, on?
This was my question, because I just thought, well, even if, I knew the answer was going to be, we don't have staffing and resources to do it, but my thought was if it was in there and we had a problem, it would give us the.
Tool to.
Theoretically, we'd have the latitude to go find out what's going on. It would be an extra protection for the community, because there's an ability for us embedded in this, if it was legal, you know, appropriate to do it, to be able to go in on a spot basis, not that.
Complaint-driven.
And again, not that we'd be targeting this facility, but that if, yeah, if it was a complaint-driven and we got, you know, some massive concern about something going on, we would have that latitude.
There, so if it's complaint-driven and already fits under how we approach Title twenty-six in our code enforcement, then what we've already baked into the development code updates would allow for us to go and, you know, check, check on any of those complaints.
Even without a business license requirement?
Yeah, the business license was more, um, I think the conversation was around, is there a proactive way, like, not complaint-driven? And if it's not complaint-driven, you really need to have it tied to some kind of licensing or procedures or whatnot. And so that was just one of the ideas, because Title twenty-six is very clear.
So you, is, is this a semantic definition of the word inspection? By saying inspection, you're implying that it's routine and proactive rather than reactive?
I think it could go either way. We, we were trying to explore, because we know what the reactive looks like, because that's, that's how we currently operate, trying to brainstorm what it would look like to have more of the routine, annual, and that one is a lot more difficult.
Although we do, on a regular basis, prioritize what we're going to do, even though, because we can't do it all. So that's pretty common, that we would prioritize certain things over other things. And, I mean, I'll just use a, a simple example is the speed limit. We might set a speed limit, and if the speed limit is thirty-five, you know, we, we can do something at thirty-six, but we don't, you know, we would say, we wouldn't do something until forty-five, I don't know, something like that. So, I mean, we do set priorities all the time on everything we do. What's up?
Now I'm driving forty-four, now that I know the law.
Well, I mean, that's just kind of, there was never anything written that that's the way it ought to be. It was all about, let's have some common sense here, you know? So you're saying it'd be harder if we put this in, it's just that tougher, that much tougher for us to?
Because we don't have a framework for it right now. I, we didn't.
And the other, and the other sounds like it'll suffice, is that?
It'll, it'll suffice with complaint-driven as, you know, and there are a number of permit requirements.
There's a way to accomplish the engagement through the complaint, this proactive.
Even without that or with?
Yes, even without that. If there's a complaint, then they can step in.
Don't worry, there'll be complaints.
This, we'd have to work with the auditor's team. Guarantee you staffing and adding FTEs is going to come up.
I mean, my question is about, we're not, you know, we're not showing us the chart that, I know we had a chart before of like the elements that we're going to change and whether or not the planning commission recommended and staff, and prosecuting attorney and staff, all that. We're not seeing that, but my recollection was that, my question is, okay, I think we were interested in there being a capacity to inspect, check, respond, whatever word you want to use, whether it were a verb, um, not just if there was like a building code violation, but some of the other new, and again, I don't remember the full list of new requirements, but like, we wanted to be able to monitor all of the requirements that we're, that are, that we're proposing to put in our code are being adhered to. And that might not, and I don't know, I'm asking kind of, this is a question, I'm thinking out loud, that might not fall into the category of a typical, oh, you built a per, you know, you built a shed with no permit, like, okay, that's, we know how to deal with that. But these are new things, more subtle things, maybe. I can't remember the, the list, but things that might not be a typical CPED compliance department response topic. Is that making sense, what I'm saying?
It is, yeah, and I think, um, we'd probably need to sit down with the auditor and Mary to go over that in detail.
It may not be a business license, that may not be the place to put it, I don't know, maybe you can expand what CPED compliance department does, but I think that was the idea, and I think it was my idea, was could we just make sure that those things that we're, that we're saying these facilities have to do are being done?
A lot of it will be, i- it's the ongoing check that is harder, like, they won't be able to get occupancy for their facility until they have checked. So those checks do happen at the beginning, it's the continued checking.
Yeah.
It's like, we're saying you need this many parking spots and one for ADA accessibility, but making, making sure going out there five years later and like, do you still have that spot? That, that's the harder one, that is usually complaint-driven. And we'll have to make sure, no matter what we come up with, um, and we can explore different options, is that it will be all privately-run residential facilities. It won't just be these ones, because we don't want to, yeah, we want to run that risk.
Can't be discriminating against.
Thank you for that word. I was looking for that word. So if, depending on how you feel about the definition, um, and whether we should move forward with those changes, and whether there are any other changes for the, for the Title twenty, so we can't permit, we don't have a permit provision right now in place. So these are really focused on our zoning codes, all the changes on the zoning codes. If you want to look at codes outside of that, let's say Title twenty-six or something with the auditor's office, I would recommend still moving forward with this piece, this package, um, while all of that is further explored, because right now there is no special use permit required, there's no noticing, there's no hearing, um, that's all what's in this package, so.
I'd like to get this done myself.
So are we, I mean, I don't remember if the board was in agreement, because like I say, you showed us, I remember slides where there was like a chart, and there were things the planning commission wanted to do that a process, that the attorney said we shouldn't do because of legal, so are we in agreement to follow the legal, you know, to do everything that we're allowed to do, that the lawyer said we can do?
I recall that there was direction from the board to follow up on these two items, but not to revisit the items that we got legal counsel.
Okay, so I just want to make sure, because I want to follow the legal advice we got, not.
If you don't like your attorney's opinion, you just get a different attorney.
Well, but I.
They all say.
I was fine with the attorney's opinion that I heard, so, but I just want to make sure, because I didn't, I don't think we actually debated that, we just kind of went through, it was informational, you just kind of said, here's the different issues and here's the questions.
I mean, my thing, I want to do what the planning commission wants.
Yeah, see, so that's, we're, we're not in agreement. I don't want to do what the planning commission wanted.
We're at odds.
Because the planning commission said to do things that the, the prosecuting attorney said would get us sued.
Why don't we do this here, forgive, um, we still have some, some time on the, on the game clock. How hard would it be to get the information, where the describes to the planning commission? Can we take like a ten-minute recess and then come back?
We can definitely.
But you're saying there's a path of least resistance we should follow, and we could still debate these other things later?
My recollection was on that, while there was, there was, I felt, direction given just to research just these two items. And kind of how we landed on the other ones were like, yeah, we're not like a hundred percent like thrilled, right, but we're going to follow attorney's advice, just because that's the, a more thorough way to get it, and then we're going to continue working with the legislator, and then, that, that was my recollection on the conversation. And we want to be on solid ground of passing something now and then working for that.
Whether we like it or not.
Yeah, that was my recollection of, of the conversation, but I might be wrong as well, like.
I just was trying to confirm, that's what I thought we were, but I wasn't sure.
But if.
Ashley's point, there's nothing on, in county code right now, so to put something in as a development regulation, there's always the opportunity for the board to come back, monitor how this actually functions in code, and then be able to, to adapt accordingly. Still want to circumvent, if you feel like there's a discussion that needs to be had, we can quickly go and get that information and put it up, and then you can.
I just wanted to clarify, because I don't want to put, like, if, if, if the decision point is to put something for public hearing, I don't want to put elements before the public for discussion that have, that have been legally determined to be not be, like, that's not, that's not useful.
Here's a decision.
So that would not be something I would vote for.
Are, are you guys in agreement that you decided to move forward with the attorney's, attorney's recommendation? They've researched the change, the language? If, if you are, then we can go ahead and move forward, make a decision today, right now. If you still think that you need a debate and give us ten minutes, we'll come back with another presentation and bring up that information so you can talk it through.
I'm, I guess, I'm not happy with it, because I think we need to be harsher on these situations myself, but I'm willing to move forward to get something on the books, kind of, is where I'm at, and then we can adjust it later.
We know Representatives Griffey and Couture.
Right, they're all working at the state level.
Maybe changes we can make once the legislation.
That's kind of where I'm at, I'm.
Okay, well, I'm good if that's where you guys are.
Okay.
Yeah, and in my conversation with, uh, with Representative Couture, um, he was also, like, King County is going through the same process that we are right now, and they're looking actually at our language to try to do something over there, and so they're like working, um, working also with Representative Couture and Representative Griffey to try to expand our.
So if I may, then we would want to get a thumbs up on proceeding with the language, proceeding with the attorney's recommendations.
Following the recommendations.
Following the attorney's recommendations, and, um, this team can explore a proactive approach, but that's not going to be part of it at this time, because it's not research or developed.
I guess that's.
Got a thumbs up? One, two, three, four.
Take it, well, it's caught.
All right, thank you so much, team, for your hard work, your persistence.
So similarly, you will see an AIS to schedule a public hearing on the consent agenda in the next available.
Okay.
Thank you.
You did a good job.
Thank you.
Can we share items? Anything? No? No? We're adjourned.